Recording in progress.
Chair Williams, we are ready to begin.
Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Planning Commission this Tuesday evening, November 8th. I now call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Ashley, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Williams?
Present.
Ice Trip Nutter?
Present.
Commissioner Nugent?
Present.
Commissioner Patel?
Present.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Present.
Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome, everybody. We're excited to be here in person with some options for virtual participation also. For those attending in person, complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the clerk. For those participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and when called upon, you can press star six to unmute yourself. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, so moving on to our first items are the consent calendar items. Ashley, would you please read the consent calendar?
Yes, Chair Williams. Item number one, 2023 Planning Commission Calendar. Adopt the 2023 Planning Commission Meeting Schedule. And item number two, Planning Commission Meeting Minutes Approval. Approve the minutes of the special meetings of September 13th, 2022, September 27th, 2022, and October 11th, 2022, and the regular meeting of October 11th, 2022.
Okay, so are there any members of the Planning Commission or, I guess, the public who would like to pull this item, either of these items from the consent calendar? That would be the Planning Commission Calendar for 2023 or the meeting minutes from previous meetings. If any members of the public wish to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Okay?
Chair Williams, we have no commenters.
Okay, great. So at that, then, we can move on to the regular agenda item, the next agenda item.
If I may, through the chair, the commission needs to vote on the consent calendar.
Thank you. So I guess I'd like to have a roll call vote for, do we do them one at a time?
I think you can have some member of the Planning Commission make a motion, and then another member can second that motion, then you can all vote.
Okay, thank you. So let's start with item number one, the Planning Commission Calendar for 2023.
If I can interrupt, so you can vote on the entire consent calendar at once. You don't have to take them one by one.
Okay, great. All right, so let's do that differently then. I would like a motion, can somebody make a motion to approve the entire consent calendar?
I would like to make a motion to approve the entire consent calendar.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All right. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Chair Williams?
Yes.
Ice Trip Nutter?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
All right. So with that, we have approved the consent calendar items. All right, thanks for your help on that. All right, at this point, I would like to move on to the public comment period. Next on the agenda is public comment, and that is where members of the public wishing to comment on any item that is not appearing on the agenda may address the Planning Commission at this time. State law prevents the commission from taking any action on any matter not on the agenda, but your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that's subject to the commission's discretion and can be extended if the commission wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. I also just want to note that we want to create an environment where all viewpoints can be heard, and so please do not speak out of turn or disrupt the meeting through clapping or jeering or any other public displays of for or against speakers. So with that, I would like to see if there's any members of the public that want to speak about anything that's not on the agenda.
Chair Williams, right now, we have one in-person speaker, and we do not have any speakers via Zoom. What would you like the timer to be?
I mean, I guess, three minutes.
Oh, I'll...
Okay, welcome. You're welcome.
Honorable Chair and Commissioners, Planning Commissioners, I am not used to speaking in public, so please forgive my nervousness. And I was spurred on to come into this meeting this evening after attending the city council meeting last night. And I was extremely disappointed with the city council's lack of resolve to hold Commissioner Nugent accountable for his actions recently. I was, however, very interested to learn from our chief of police that indeed taking a political sign down is a criminal act. I'm hoping that for future agenda items of this commission and/or upward mobility to the city council, that this commission might take up to get to the truth of this issue, because there are a number of us as concerned citizens that do believe we hold those of us who are either elected, appointed, or dealing with issues related to the city of San Mateo. I don't know anymore whether it's a higher standard. I think I would just say an average standard of behavior. And I hope that most of you actually saw the commission meeting last night, because the ending was so disturbing to me that I couldn't even stay to watch them vote three to two, that they don't even want a hearing to find out what the truth is. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, if there are no other public speakers on general items?
Chair Williams, we don't have any more speakers.
Okay, so we'll go on to item number three, which, do you want to, will you read that for me?
Item number three, 445 Virginia Avenue, new single-family residence, PA 2021-20.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start with a staff presentation, followed by the applicant's presentation, and then some clarifying, opportunity for clarifying questions from the commission, and then public comments. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present, and the members of the public are given two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. The applicant may also be given an additional five minutes at the end to respond to public comments, if desired. Once the public hearing is closed, the commission will deliberate and render a decision on the project. Finally, if a decision is made tonight, the decision of the Planning Commission on this project can be appealed to the city council within 10 calendar days. Okay, with that, we'll go ahead and get started.
Thank you, Chair Williams and members of the Planning Commission. Vincent Kwan, Assistant Planner and Staff Planner for Agenda Item Three this evening, public hearing for 445 Virginia Avenue, PA-2021-020. The project before the commission this evening is for a single-family residence located at 445 Virginia Avenue, highlighted here in blue. This map highlights the location of the project in the Baywood residential neighborhood of San Mateo. Here is an aerial image showing the project site located in the single-family residential neighborhood. The existing residence is a two-story, 2,164-square-foot, split-level ranch architectural-style, single-family residence on an 8,610-square-foot lot. The general plan's land use designation of this site is for a single-family, which is consistent with the site's zoning designation of one-family dwellings, R1B. Moving on to the project description, the project consists of the demolition of the existing residence, seen here, the grading of the entire site with a proposed cut and fill depth of 13 feet eight and a half inches measured from existing grade to accommodate a basement, to lower the finished floor of the garage, and to install an elevator, and construction of a new single-family residence, shown here. Here's the roadmap for the next few slides, focusing on the applicable codes and policies. Staff will begin by covering the local requirements, followed by the applicable entitlements for the project, including a site development planning application, design review, and lastly, the applicable state laws. To begin, the zoning code provides a list of development standards, which are summarized here, which include floor area ratio, building height, and setbacks. As you can see, the project complies with the applicable code standards. It should be noted that the 408-square-foot ADU is not included in the floor area ratio or floor area. Next are the project's list of planning application entitlements. The first entitlement is for a special use permit, or SUP, for the demolition of the existing single-family residence. The second entitlement is for an SFDDR, or Single Family Dwelling Design Review, for the proposed new single-family residence. The third entitlement is for a site development planning application, or SDPA, for the proposed grading of more than 5,000 square feet or 5,000 cubic yards, or cubic feet, apologies, and the cut and fill, which exceeds five feet in height or depth at its maximum point. Because the proposed depth of the grading exceeds five feet, the project requires Planning Commission review. This will be discussed further in the next section. Since the project is proposing to grade the entire site, which is 8,610-square-feet in size, and cut 515 cubic yards and fill 15 cubic yards of soil, and grade at a height of 13 feet eight and a half inches, as shown in this graphic, a site development planning application is required. As part of the conditions of approval to reduce any concerns or impacts of the proposed grading, conditions for grading and drainage plans, along with erosion and sediment control plans, are to be provided during the building permit application. As part of the SFDDR process, staff reviewed the project in conformance with the single-family design guidelines. The guidelines are meant to provide a guidance on the design of the single-family dwelling and second-story additions, including some provisions to address building size, architectural character, and relationship to the street and nearby residences. While the applicant will be presenting and providing additional detail on the design, staff wanted to highlight the project is in conformance with the design guidelines by utilizing materials and colors which are found in the neighborhood and maintaining a consistent building scale, massing, and height as other residences. Lastly are the state-level policies. The subject application is subject to both Senate Bill 330 Preliminary Application, or SB 330, and the Housing Accountability Act, or HAA. The applicant submitted an SB 330 application on August 17th, 2022, after the initial application was filed. The project consisting of a single-family residence with an attached ADU is considered a housing development project. As such, this limits the city from conducting more than five public hearings and imposing ordinances, policies, and standards after the preliminary application is filed. Similarly, since the project is considered a housing development project, HAA applies to the project, which limits the city's ability to deny, reduce density of, or render housing development projects infeasible if objective standards are met. Staff has evaluated the project and finds that it meets the applicable objective standards in the general plan and zoning code. For public comments, public noticing was mailed to addresses within a 500-foot radius of the project site and people who requested to be part of the interested parties list. In addition, a placard was posted at the project site, and the project was included in the planning newsletter. Staff has received one public comment regarding this project. Since the existing residence is not considered a historic resource, as determined by the historic resource evaluation, the project is exempt from CEQA using the exemption shown on the screen. Lastly, a new condition of approval shown on the screen here for an alternative means and methods request, or AMMR, will be added to the resolution prior to Planning Commission's signature to address the connection between the elevator, the main dwelling, and the ADU. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve the single-family dwelling design review, site development planning application, and special use permit, except the categorical exemption from environmental review with the additional condition of approval for alternative means and methods requests for the elevator and connection between the main dwelling and ADU that will be added to the resolution prior to Planning Commission's signature. This concludes staff's presentation and is available for questions. The applicant is here tonight and will also be providing a presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you for your presentation. So I think at this time, we should go on to the applicant presentation and then do clarifying questions after that. Everybody's in agreement? Great.
Good evening, Chair Williams and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Josh Smith, and I'm here with my wife, Leil Cullinor. We are the owners of the existing house located at 445 Virginia Avenue, as well as the applicants for the new single-family residence at 445 Virginia Avenue. We are here tonight along with Sherri Scott, our architect, Mike Callen, our landscape architect, and Mark Hudak, our attorney. After Leil and I make a few brief comments, Sherri Scott will make a presentation for you regarding the design of the proposed single-family residence and the attached ADU. Mike Callen and Mark Hudak are here to answer any questions you may have for either of them. I should also mention that we are very grateful to staff for all of the assistance and guidance that they have provided to us during this process. Specifically, Vincent and Rendell have both been great to work with, so please express our gratitude to Rendell. We have, excuse me, sorry.
We have lived at 445 Virginia Avenue for the past 18 years. 445 Virginia Avenue is the first and only home that we have ever owned. We love Baywood, and we love San Mateo. It is our home, our community, and the place where we have raised both of our kids. Our hope is that we can continue to live in and be part of the San Mateo and Baywood community for at least the next 18 years, hopefully much longer than that. We are replacing our existing house with a new house to make our home better suited to aging in place, working from home, and accommodating our parents, as well as our kids, and their future partners when they come home to visit and perhaps live.
Our architect, Sherri Scott, will review the design of the proposed new residence for you shortly. We would just like to share with you that our goal from the beginning of the process was to design a Mediterranean-style house that would complement and enhance the architecture and neighborhood character of Baywood. Additionally, as Ron Mukunawa and Rendell suggested to us during our initial meeting with them a few years ago, our goal all along was to submit an application that did not request any variances or exceptions. And thanks to Sherri Scott, our architect, as well as several helpful suggestions from Vincent and Rendell, we were able to come up with a design and plan that accomplishes our objectives while also being code compliant. We are not requesting any variances or any exceptions. Sherri Scott will now provide you with a brief overview of the design and architecture of the proposed single-family residence. We are happy to answer any questions you may have as well. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Chair Williams and Planning Commission members. Thank you for your time in considering this project. I'm Sherri Scott. I'm the architect that's been working with Josh and Leil on the new house at 445 Virginia Avenue. I'll give you just a brief overview of the project, and of course, I'll be available for any questions you may have if you want to dig deeper into any of the design issues. From the beginning, we were inspired to design a house that really fit into the neighborhood. These are all images of similar houses or similar-style houses in the Baywood neighborhood, Mediterranean-style, two stories with a garage, and these are all the, some of the older homes in the neighborhood, a couple of the newer homes that were designed in the older style, the Mediterranean style. So this was the inspiration for the overall design style for the project. So drawing from that context, this, the view from Virginia Avenue looking at the house, and we've incorporated several design elements that reflect the Mediterranean style. We have traditional divided light windows, and I should say, as the design evolved in working with Vincent, we added some more of the traditional detailing originally had a little bit more contemporary Mediterranean feel, and as the design progressed, we became a little bit more traditional Mediterranean. So we've added timber headers. It's all stucco interior. It has a traditional arched entry, a deep recessed entry, which is typical of Mediterranean home. We have carriage-style doors, which really break down the scale of the garage that faces the street, and also fits in with the timbers that are over the headers of the larger windows. In order to sort of break up the overall size that masks the house, we have a combination of gable roofs with traditional tile vents, and then also shed roofs. And the shed roofs are lower the plate height closest to the east and west neighbors, so that helps bring the house down sort of in a cascading feel as we go towards the neighbors to the east and west. So the street view is in the upper left. Moving further towards the west and looking at the house from the street on the upper right, you can see how the shed roofs cascade down and get lower as you get towards the property lines. This also helps the house comply with all of the height requirements, including the daylight plane from the neighbors. So, you know, cascading down as we get closer to the neighbors on the east and west, and then breaking up the house with the combination of shed and gable roofs. The lower two images are from the rear yard, and you'll see that there's a shade arbor facing south, which helps provide a little bit of shade in the summertime, and you can see how the rear yard terrace steps up the hill. So there's, it's a very upsloping lot from the street, so that's part of the reason for the excavation required for the house, is that the lot slopes up towards the rear and also towards the west. And so to mediate both of those slopes, that's also part of the reason for the excavation that we're requesting. So these are the elevations of the house. You can see, particularly in the east elevation, the slope going towards the rear yard. Virginia Avenue is on the right, so you see the upslope that we're dealing with. And so we wanted to make as much of the backyard usable. It helps with the driveway slope, too, make the driveway a little bit less steep, and then nestles the house in between the two neighbors height-wise as well. So this is the site plan for the proposed house. It's a little hazy on the projection, but you can see that what this is, is an overlay of the existing house footprint versus the proposed house footprint. So the red line with the hatch indication is the footprint of the existing house to be removed, and then the black outline is the new house to be proposed. So it's actually a little bit narrower than the existing house. We're pulling a little bit further away from the neighbors on the east and west sides, and then about the same setback on the front. So we're not going any closer to the street, although there is room to grow in that direction. We kept basically the same frontage setback on the front and shrink it from the sides. This is a neighbor, front elevation showing the neighboring houses on the east and west, and just illustrating how, even though we have a two-story house, we're really mediating the height between the east and west neighbors. We're kind of right in the middle of the height of east and west neighbors there. The landscape plan, Virginia Avenue is at the bottom of the page. You can see the house footprint on the site in the center, in the white outline. And then there's a series of terraces that progress up the hill. Again, part of the reason for some of the excavation is to make the backyard usable, and the ADU as actually the piece that projects into the backyard, so there'll be a nice access to get to the ADU on a level terrace before there's a series of terraces that go up the hill and the rear yard. That's the end of the architectural presentation, and of course, we have, will be available for questions. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation. So at this time, I think I'll see if any of the Planning Commissioners have any questions, and we can go to the public comment period. Are there any questions? Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, through the chair. My first question is for staff. You mentioned the staff presentation and AMMR as a condition of approval. I was wondering if we could revisit that for a minute, and I had a little bit of trouble understanding what exactly the condition is.
Through the chair, we're pulling it up right now. Could you repeat your question?
Yeah, I don't remember what it stands for, but you mentioned that there is a condition of approval being added, and the acronym was AMMR, and I don't remember seeing that condition of approval in the sample conditions of approval in the packet. So I think that's been added since the packet came out, and I was just curious if we could look at the language again, because I had a little bit of trouble following what exactly the condition is.
Alternate, alternate means and methods.
Thank you.
I think is what it was.
So through the chair, yes, this condition was added after the packet was released to address the connection between the ADU, the elevator, and the main dwelling as a condition of approval, since connection between the ADU and the main dwelling and the elevator would require an AMMR from, approval from the building official in order for it to be feasible.
I see. So we're not, the condition is not to change the design in any way. The condition is to obtain an additional approval from a building official?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then my, I have one more question, which I think is probably best addressed by the applicant, which is about the west windows. I was curious what the west windows are facing, and I know that there was information in the packet that mentioned design changes that were made to the west windows, so I was curious what exactly they're facing and what design changes were made.
So there were a couple of minor design changes to the windows that happened, you know, as part of the back and forth during the design review, and one of them And one of them was to make the stairwell windows, the stairwell is on the west side, to make those windows have an opaque, like a frosted glass so that it brings light into the stairwell, which is the idea since it's connecting all the levels to have the light flow into the center of the house without creating privacy issues for the neighbors on the west. So those windows are obscure glass. There's also two bathroom windows that face west, which will also have obscure glass for the same reason. So that there will be no privacy issues between the west neighbor and those two restrooms. The final windows on that side are bedroom windows and those were actually shifted, the sills were shifted up and they were made a little bit smaller again to address privacy issues. And they're also offset from the neighbors' windows facing west.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thanks. Commissioner Ebner, do you have any questions?
Thank you for the presentation. So I want to understand that this project does, is being presented as having HAA abilities. It's covered by the Housing Authority Act or?
Through the chair, yes, it is, falls into, under the HAA.
Okay. So the main reason why we're looking at it this evening is because of the grading component? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yet if we cannot deny the project because it's covered by the HAA?
Through the chair, I can perhaps address that, Manira Sande, planning manager. So the HAA has certain requirements or certain criteria that has to be met for projects to be denied. And so those are tied to like public health, safety impacts. If a project under the HAA meets all objective standards, then the planning commission cannot deny the project.
And as this project does meet all of those standards, correct?
That is correct. Staff evaluated the project against all the objective development standards and the project as conditioned meets all the findings.
Okay. So I can just clarify further through the chair. So yeah, so the Housing Accountability Act, your discretion is limited. This counts as a housing development subject to the HAA. And where a project subject to the HAA meets, meets all objective standards, then a project cannot be denied or reduced in density unless very narrow health and safety findings are met. For example, if there's a specific adverse impact on public health or safety and that relies on certain definitions in the HAA. So again, discretion very limited.
So, so thank you. So the applicant has gone through the process of this extensive grading for this new home. Yet, yet could the home be built to its same height without the grading? And, and because it's covered by HAA, it could have been a request for concession, thus increasing the height of the property?
I think that you're referring to a different statute called the Density Bonus Law, in which case if a housing development, if a project's subject to the Density Bonus Law provides a certain number of affordable units under a formula, then that project can request additional density and incentives or concessions, which could include the modification of zoning standards. This is not a density bonus project.
Right. So just because it's covered by HAA, they could not have asked for a concession to go to a higher?
Correct.
Building, okay. So since the, is the, the ADA is attached to the main residence, correct? So is it an ADU or is it a JADU?
Through the chair, it is an ADU. If I'm understanding your question correctly, it's that you're asking about if the accessory dwelling unit is attached to the main dwelling?
Correct. So is it, is a JADU attached to the dwelling unit and it is an ADU? Can you have an ADU that's attached to a dwelling unit and it not be a junior, a JADU? Is what I'm asking.
Yes.
Yes.
And what, what sets that? What's the difference between a JADU and an ADU that is attached to the structure?
Through the chair, an ADU is exempt up to 800 square feet and provides all the living provisions for eating, cooking, sanitation and living versus a JADU does not provide all of those standards. It has perhaps a smaller kitchen, may have shared sanitation facilities with the main dwelling and would be having a shared interior access with the main dwelling at the same time.
So then my last question would be, could this property have, it cannot have another ADU built on it?
Through the chair, it can have an additional JADU, but JADUs are not exempt from floor area and this application is maximizing their floor area. So they could perhaps convert a portion of the home into a JADU in the future, but it cannot be an addition.
Okay. Thank you. It's the end of my questions for now.
Okay, great. Commissioner Nugent, do you have any questions? No?
I do not.
Okay. Martin, do you have any questions? No? Okay. I have a few questions. So with regards to the grading, does the elevator, depth of the elevator trigger the review that's, the planning commission review? Is it, is it the depth of the elevator pit that is triggering the, putting us over in terms of the grading and excavation? Because in the sections, you see that there's this, you know, deep elevator pit.
Through the chair, correct. It is the elevator pit that exceeds the maximum allowed grading.
Okay. So really, because they want an elevator in the home, there's, that's part of why we're seeing this. And then the alternate or alternative means and methods, I think what, when I read that, it sounds like that's up to the building official during the building, department, building plan check phase, it sounds like, to determine if that's acceptable. I've, I'm kind of familiar with that. It's usually like a fire rating issue, I think, if, in my experience.
Through the chair, yes, it is up to the discretion of the building official to grant the AMR. That's to my knowledge, yes.
Yeah, there's, it's kind of interesting because you could move the door to the ADU and then have the elevator on the outside of the unit. And then you would not have that connection between, like it's a shaft basically, I think is the issue. I think it's a fire rating issue. I don't know. Anyway, I won't get into that, I guess. The other question I had was, is there a requirement in planning or building that the driveway be, I mean, I know it's not currently level. It's probably, you know, there's a lot of houses that have steep driveways, but does, do new current requirements require that like the, the 20 feet outside of the garage door has to be like mostly level?
Through the chair, not to my knowledge that there is any requirement of such.
Okay. Because that's another reason why, you know, that has to be excavated. Okay. I'm just sort of trying to piece together the process. That I guess is all my questions for now. Thank you. Okay. So if there's no other questions from any planning commissioners, then we can go ahead and?
Through the chair. I did have one based on what you had asked for staff. My understanding was the, the site development planning application is before us. I think there was, I thought there was two things and now I'm not so sure. There's the depth of, of grading over five feet. I thought I'd read that over 185 cubic yards of earth movement triggered it and I think they're 515 or 500 if you balance it. So is it both things triggering it or just one?
So through the chair, both items would require a site development planning application. However, it is the depth of the grading which requires a planning commission approval.
Thank you very much. My only question.
No other questions? Okay. So at this time, we can move on to public comments and we'll, I guess I should see how many speakers do we have at this time?
Chair Williams, right now we have four speakers and they're all in person.
Okay. Great. So three minutes per person is fine and we can go ahead and get started.
Chair Williams, our first in-person speaker is Rich Yang. Rich, you can come up to the podium.
Hi, welcome.
Sorry, my foot fell asleep, so I'm like limping. Anyhow, hi everyone. My name is Rich Yang and I'm here to speak in support of Josh and Lale's project. I've known the Smiths for over 10 years. I live on 419 Virginia, which is just down the street from them. In fact, Josh and I, we, we served on the Baywood PTA board together for many years. I think they've, they're a wonderful family. They're very involved with the community and having gone through this process myself, I think that their plans are beautiful, will be wonderful for the community. And so as a result, I'm in full support of their plans. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your comments. Who do we have next?
Chair Williams, our next in-person speaker is Karen Kay. Karen can come up to the podium.
Good evening, members of the planning commission and everybody here tonight. Thanks for coming. My name is Karen Kay and I'm here tonight in support of Josh and Lale in their new project on Virginia Avenue. My husband and I and our three sons live at 423 Virginia Avenue. It's four houses away from 445 Virginia. My family has known Josh and Lale for 30-plus years and our kids have gone together and it has been fond memories to have them go from kindergarten into college days and enjoying many dinners and activities together. Josh and Lale have been supporting our neighborhood in causes and schools and anything that needs to be done, they're always ready to jump in, which is wonderful. I gotta put my glasses on. One of the most remarkable memories I have besides the lot, when they first moved into Virginia, day one, they loved Virginia Avenue. They hadn't even moved in, they're, they're unpacking and they loved it. And what they loved most about was the community and people who have raised their children there and retired there and having grandchildren come back, kids come home from college. And that's what they loved about the community. And they know everybody on the block and support people when they need it. So I just wanted to let you know, this is why they are inspired and aspire to make this new home their place to live and have family and friends and their children come home and grandchildren in the future. So I think the, I'm in real estate and I think the design is very attractive and will fit well into the Baywood community. And I think it will add value to our community as well. So I support it. Thanks so much for your time and consideration. Thanks.
Thanks for your comments. Okay, next.
Chair Williams, our next in-person speaker is Kevin Randick. Kevin, you can come up to the podium.
Good evening.
Hi, welcome.
I think the development sounds great. My main concern is, is about the height of the structure versus what exists today. We have, we live on Nevada behind them, actually one house adjacent to the people right behind them. And we've got views of the bay, the East Bay hills. We can see a lot of things. I'm worried about obstructing the view A and B, the amount of light that will be diminished. That's my main concern is the view. I think that doing the development's a wonderful thing, but if it encroaches on our available light and views to the bay, which is a part of our life, I think it's, we need, I like to know those answers. I don't really have a handle on how much the third story will impart or impact the overall height and what the obstruction would be for our home. Can that be, is that be made public by the architect or by the owners?
I think that, I don't know if we can provide comment now, but it may be. Is the applicant avail, allowed to provide comment at the end of the public comment period?
Yes, that is correct. The applicant can have five minutes at the end to respond.
Okay. So at the end of the public comment period, the applicant can have a chance to provide further comment?
Yeah, well, just as long as we know the elevation difference, that's, that would be satisfactory or unsatisfactory. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. And next, next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next in-person speaker is Robert Doherty. Robert, you can come up to the podium.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I also would like to express my support for Josh and Lale's project. I live across the street and down one house. So I basically look out to their home whenever I wash dishes or make coffee and I do both of those every day. I've been friends with Josh and Lale for, gosh, 15 years now. Kids are the same age, they grew up together. And I would consider Josh conscientious and respectful to a fault. He's a great neighbor. This is a, a passion project if there ever was one. He has the ability to build a dream home and it's something that he's been very excited about and we're excited for him. So I would just like to express our support and my being here is contingent upon getting a tour and hopefully having him host us for dinner. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for your comments.
Chair Williams, we don't have any more speakers.
Okay. Great. Thank you. If there's no further public speakers, then the applicant is given a chance to respond to any comments at this time if they would like to.
Chair Williams, members of the planning commission, I would just point out one more time that the, the footprint of the new house is almost exactly in the same location as the footprint of the existing house. And the new house is two levels above a garage, as are many, many other houses in and around Baywood. And it's fully code compliant. As I said in my opening remarks, we made sure to meet all of the codes and requirements, including but not limited to the height requirements. So that's, that's all I would say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to close the public comment period and we can go to jury, to planning commission comments. Who would like to go first? Anyone like to go first?
Through the chair, if I can just start from the opposite end.
That'd be great.
Thanks to staff for, for their work. I'll just mention that I visited the site yesterday and kind of drove around the neighborhood looking at some adjacent architecture and development patterns. And I'm just going to touch on, I think, the three items before a special use permit. Sorry, in the wrong order, Vincent, but special use permit, the site development permit and then the SFDDR. On special use permit, I have no comments. That all made sense to me. On the site development permit, planning application, sorry, just because that was sort of triggering our review, I tried to, to dig in and to the extent that I could understand any, any concerns or technical issues. So in reading through the geotechnical report, the drawings were helpful as well in understanding where the house sits comparison to today, how much excavation's taking place, how deep it is, just noting the relative location of bedrock, the the, the nature of the soil that's being removed. Not seeing really any changes to the existing drainage patterns or volumes. Not seeing any off-site excavation required. And even seeing that the, the heritage trees looked like they were going to be impacted. And then I realized they're existing, where they are in the existing design layout, there's already sort of retaining walls pretty close to them. And so I didn't see anything in, in that that caused me concern or would prevent me from making findings. And then on the, just on the SFDDR, on the design, there's probably a lot of nice things I would say about the design. I think it does achieve goals of, of, of sort of, you know, acknowledging its context. And I think the, looked to me like it was definitely compliant with the, the guidelines. And I think it does, it does a good job of, of picking up on some of the motifs of the, of that aesthetic and being contextual. So I didn't have any concerns there. I think I did notice that most of the Mediterranean-style homes have clay tile roofs. There's some, for sure, with asphalt shingles. And I understand in the findings that, that you still see the asphalt shingles in a number of, you know, types of houses in the neighborhood. So I make that small observation, but still nothing there that would prevent me from making the findings. So, yeah. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Sure.
Through the chair. I really appreciate the work that planning staff and the applicant's architects have done to ensure that this is code compliant. And also in creating a beautiful home. I could not find anything negative to say about this in comparing it to our codes. And I found that, I feel that, just generally, that the architecture is going to be an improvement aesthetically. And I hope that the applicants can enjoy their home, their new home for many years. The, I looked as well at the heritage trees to ensure that they were going to be safe with the, the new walls and the new landscape around that. And I, I feel like I'm confident enough that, that that has been accounted for and that you'll, you're going to have usable space in your backyard, which is always nice around there. I just want to make sure that during construction, your contractor is, is very careful around those. Otherwise, I think it's a great project. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that, that was put into this and hope it serves your, your family as it, as it evolves and grows. Those are my only comments.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Ebner, will you go next?
Through the chair. I echo my fellow commissioners. I think this is a great project. I've had the extreme pleasure for the last three years to live with multi-generational members in my home. And it is nowhere as near as inviting as this one's going to be. So I hope you get as much joy as I've been able to experience. And it does turn out well for you. The only thing that, the only question I have and wish is that this home, both the interior and the exterior appliances are not gas-fed. The city is really aggressively trying to replace all gas to new facilities. And I do know you have a couple of exterior gas pits, which I hope you don't use. So, but other than that, I think it's a wonderful project. And as Adam said, I think it's quite an improvement over the, I'm sure that you love your existing home, but you wouldn't be taking it down if you didn't think you could replace it with something better. So I, I am in support of this project.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, Chair. Echoing my fellow commissioners, it's really clear the amount of time and care that staff and the applicant have put into the application to ensure that it meets all of the code requirements and the objective design guidelines. Like my fellow commissioners, I could not find anything that did not seem to be in compliance with the objective design standards or to pose a significant health or safety risk. I only have two small comments. These are, again, the project has met all objective design requirements. So these are my opinions. These are not requests. One is, like Commissioner Wiggins, I personally don't think that composite shingle roofs are a match with Mediterranean-style architecture. I think when you usually see composite shingle roofs on Mediterranean-style homes, it's because the original clay tile roof has been replaced. And so I think if you wanted to be true to the original style that you're trying to emulate, you could consider a clay tile roof. The other thing is that, from reading through the packet, it seemed like those design changes on the west elevation were made in response to comments from a neighbor that I think no longer lives there. And so, you know, my opinion is, is if your neighbors don't have concerns about the privacy, I would be comfortable with you not glazing those windows because the, it, the sunlight is great, but, you know, you can get even more sunlight if there's not glazing on the windows. So those are my only two comments. Thank you.
Okay. Great. I have a few comments. Generally, I think it's a great project as well. But I do have a couple of comments. So the, the ADU allows you to have a bigger house than you would if it was just called a bedroom as part of the regular house. About, you know, like another master suite or something. But, but it, so it almost works, except that there are some things missing in the ADU. And I think I did see it later in my secondary look at the packet. And so you'll need to be sure to add, you know, a full kitchen, right? I mean, not full kitchen, but, you know, the full complement of the ability to have a refrigerator and a stove or oven of some sort or, and a sink that is more than just sort of a bar sink. So, so I do want to make sure that that happens so that it is actually serving the purpose of an ADU. Although, you know, it worked, it's, I, I do understand it's allowable to have, you know, extended family living in an ADU. So there's some flexibility there. But to be compliant with the requirements, you would have to have that. And by the way, I did recently take a class because learning about, as part of my licensing, learning about net zero carbon design is part of the requirements now. So I just took a class on, a required class, continuing education on induction cooktops. And it was pretty interesting, actually. It sounds like they're great. So there's a lot of good options out there for non-gas appliances these days. Let's see. So the other part about the ADU is the elevator. And I do find it interesting that the, if, if the elevator, you know, if, if the primary use is for the, the occupant of the ADU, then that's, makes sense the way it is. Although it does go up to the second floor, where the rest of the house is. If you wanted to have the flexibility of having it be for, I don't know, having the ADU be not connected to your house, then you would just need to move the door back from the, you know, one side of the elevator to the other side of the elevator. And then the occupant of the ADU would have to go out their door and, to use the elevator and into the main level of the house. So either way, I guess you're ending up the occupant, the elevator use has some overlap between the two residences. So that was kind of an interesting dilemma. But there's, I guess there's no actual requirement that it be one way or the other, except that then you run into this alternate means and methods issue, which, if that's an issue, you simply move the door back. Like, if the building official doesn't approve it, I guess you move the door back. So there's, there's some options there. I do think that you've done a nice job of addressing the height concerns that, you know, that the neighbors may have and such. You are clearly, according to the information in the packet, you know, under, like, fully compliant and under the allowable height with a couple of allowable exceptions for the, I think it was the, like, portion of the eve or something. And again, you wouldn't actually even be here before us, except that you have this grading that you want to do, which brings the house down lower than it would otherwise be. So, I mean, I understand that it's in an effort to, you know, keep the house lower than, you know, keep it under the allowable limits. And the, and I do think the elevator pit kind of, it's not a, I'm sure it's not a very big area. It's just a residential-sized elevator. And yet, that's kind of part of what's triggering you to be here as well. So given all of that, it seems like, like very, you know, like easily approved. I just wanted to say a couple of things about the design. I think the design's really great. I, I think it'll fit in really nicely in the neighborhood. I did think that the windows on the north elevation, which I think is like the dining room at the front, right over the garage, I would be, I mean, if it was me, I would be kind of interested to see what, if that was, it's a lot of windows. It's like, I mean, it's a wonderful wraparound element, but it also might be nice to see it, like, with some plaster around it, just to kind of pop them or make, you know, just set them in some plaster as well. So anyway, those are just my two cents about that. I guess that's about it. Let me just see if any other comments. Uh, I guess that's really, wait a minute. Yes, that's it. I think, generally, I think it's a great project and sounds like it'll be, you know, wonderful home for your family. And I think it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood as well. It seems that you've taken all of the neighborhood aspects into account. So with that, that's all the comments that I have. Are there any further comments?
Can I make a motion to approve?
Yes, you can. Anyone want to make a second?
Do we want to get the, the, okay, the recommendation? Okay. Yes, I'll second that motion.
Okay. Can we take a roll call vote?
Yes. Chair Williams?
Approved.
Vice Chair Ebner?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Approved.
Commissioner Patel?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Approved.
Through the chair, if I could just ask for a clarification, did the motion include the addition of the new condition that staff presented?
Thank you. Yes, I intended to make a motion to approve it with the new condition.
Do we need a second?
I think that's, that's sufficient for the record.
Okay. Great. All right. With that, it's approved as noted by Commissioner Wiggins. All right. That closes that item. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. At this time, are there any other reports and announcements?
Yes, I'm happy to present reports and announcements. Just have a few. So we will be having a special meeting next week on November 17. This is to accommodate a private development application at the Drager site. And this will be a public hearing where the planning commission would be considering the project to make a recommendation to council. Last night, the council also directed staff to schedule a special meeting on December 1st for this item. So that is also in the works. We will not have any meetings over Thanksgiving or on November 29th. I know we were looking at that as a possible second special meeting date, but that will no longer be moving forward. And then in December, we will only have the one meeting. We are canceling the second meeting, but we do have one business item. It's a planning commission study session for a new project called Block 20 that's also in downtown.